Now, so, all right, we'll call this meeting to order.
Ridsdale. Episali.
Yes.
John.
Here.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order.
Got it.
Yes.
John.
Here.
I got the sound playing and I want it to stop. Hang on, I'm trying to stop it, it's like recording and.
Nouncing.
I got the sound playing and I want it to stop. Mute, there we go, got it. Okay, Du Castle. Geesler.
Here.
Cole Pepper.
Here.
Freidenberg.
Here.
Next up is the minutes. Of August seventeenth.
Prove the minutes of August seventeenth, twenty twenty.
I second that.
Is that Freidenberger or Episali?
That was a Freidenberger, we need a, he actually made the motion, we need a second.
I'll second, Episali.
Okay, you got. Richard and Tony.
Okay.
That works.
It sounded like that's what happened anyway.
Sure.
Discussion on that.
No.
All right, no discussion, roll call.
Episali.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Du Castle. Oops, sorry, he's not here. Uh, Geesler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
Not to question my clerk, but did we skip over public comment for a reason?
Oh, no, sorry.
No problem, I just want to make sure I do it right too, so is there any public comment out there?
Not on my list, because I don't need a motion for that.
Right. So we do have public comment, if you're not on the agenda and there's someone out there wanting to speak, then now is your chance. No one's highlighting Paula?
John Liski, uh, has his hand raised.
Okay, because I can't see it, so. Mr. Liski, please go ahead.
Well, I'll, uh, reserve my comment for the public hearing part, I think, but I just wanted to. Let you know that.
Okay. All right then, so. If that's being said and done and public comment is over. We will move down to item number four, if I am correct, Paula, to the public hearing.
Yeah, so we're gonna need a motion to open, and then when we're done with it, we'll need a motion to close.
Yes.
I moved, uh, open the public hearing and the. Uh, amendment to article four of the zoning ordinance.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Did you mean to skip item number four and go to item number five? Because that item five is the, um, amendment.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
Okay, well, that's fine, seems we, that's what you made the motion for, we can go to five. Public hearing to consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Provide outside seating and dining standards, is that correct?
Yes, and who was the second on that?
Jeff, I believe it was, yes.
Yep.
So we're ready for the roll call to go in.
Okay, no. Episali.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Geesler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is open. Consider amendment to the zoning ordinance to. Provide outside seating and dining standards.
Yes, so, uh, this is, uh, this is, we've been talking about this the last few months, nothing has changed from last month. Um, we just needed to hold the actual public hearing on it before we could, uh, recommend, uh, council approve the amendment to the ordinance. Um, so I guess, uh, at this point, uh, is there any other discussion that you guys would like to have about, uh, about this ordinance as it stands?
No. No?
No questions for Michael?
No.
Is there any other questions out there? Then I would actually, if I'm not out of tune here tonight, uh. Make the recommendation that we, uh. Go out a close session. Unless, John, you got something to say, you're up on my screen.
I, I was gonna comment on item number four, public hearing, did I?
No, we're not, we went down to five.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll go to four, or. Four next.
Well, was that a motion from Mike?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Now second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vault to come out of this closed session.
Episali.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Geesler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
So now I would, uh, suppose that you would like a motion on. To, to consider the amendment to the ordinance. Is that correct?
So, item number four would be the public hearing for the petition for special land use and site plan review.
Okay.
For one of the Grand River.
Item number four of the public hearing for petition for the special land use. We need a motion to go, open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on, uh, item four. Special land use.
Second Episali.
Geesler already seconded it, sorry.
Got to be fast.
Quiet.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, ready for a vote?
Episali.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Geesler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
All right. Floor is open for the public hearing on the special land use. Who has anything to say?
Be happy to, uh, present our staff comments if, uh, if that's. Desired at this time.
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay, great. Uh, so yeah, hopefully everybody got a chance to look at our staff report that was provided last week Friday. Uh, I'll just do a brief summary of that, uh, along with some additional information that was, uh, also provided to us by the applicant. So, this request is from Lang, Langsberg Property Acquisitions LLC for property located at one zero five East Grand River Road. Property is located on the north side of Grand River Road, east of Crumb Street, west of Roosevelt Row, south of Lang Street. And is developed with an existing primary structure, four thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet in size, uh, and this is the Clots Building. Uh, the property contains thirty-eight feet of frontage along Lang Street and forty-four feet of frontage along East Grand River Road. And is approximately eight thousand and nine square feet in size. The applicant, uh, has petition for special use permit and final site plan approval. To utilize that property for a combined marijuana provisioning center, retailer and processor for both medical and adult use marijuana. The property is owned C one, Central District, Business District. And was, uh, formerly used as a floor and cabinet retailer. Um, as far as the land use pattern is concerned. We have two businesses immediately to the east of the site and three businesses immediately to the west that are utilized for commercial purposes. Uh, further, uh, to the east, uh, are primarily commercial land uses. Uh, further to the west, we have, uh, primarily commercial land uses with some clustered single-family residential dwellings. Uh, to the north, primarily a single-family residential, and to the south, uh, on the south side of Grand River Road, obviously we've got commercial land uses there as well. Um, so this property, uh, being eight thousand nine, uh, eight thousand and nine square feet in size, and it's a, it's irregular in shape. Um, with that existing building, uh, occupying four thousand three hundred and twenty-five square feet of that area. Um, there is an existing gravel parking lot, uh, behind that structure, uh, to the north, which is currently utilized jointly with five other businesses. Um, currently, uh, in regard to vehicular circulation and parking, we've got no additional parking spaces being proposed. Uh, the applicant is requesting a waiver, uh, for these parking requirements due to the layout of the property. Um, specifically when, within section thirteen oh three, item D one of the ordinance. Um, the applicant states that the proximity of the public parking within eight hundred feet of this parcel. Uh, should be, uh, allowed to reduce the required par- parking spaces by half of the requirement. Um, our parking requirement here is twenty-two spaces in total. Um, but with that proximity to public on-street parking, um, we can reduce that to eleven. Um. And then further, the applicant noted in their application that due to the layout of the site, that no additional parking spaces can be provided at all. Uh, in order to maintain that ten-foot access drive and the shape of the parcel, also limiting, uh, additional parking as well. Um. And then, uh, further, um, the applicant is also requesting a waiver. Um, to, uh, for, there's a paving requirement that's associated with the off-street parking. Um, this, this can be waived by the planning commission, the applicant's also requesting that. Within the additional information that was provided to you on Friday. Uh, the applicant has an itemized list of additional information here. Um, if we look at, uh, item three point two. Um, we go into several specific parking standards that we asked for additional information on. And then there was a revised site plan that was provided. So with that. Pull up that site plan real quick here. The applicant's noting that within a hundred and, uh, within three hundred feet of this property, there's a hundred and ten. Public parking spaces available with two, uh, barrier-free parking spaces included within that. Um, further, three hundred, within the three hundred feet of this parcel, we have a hundred and thirty. Uh, available parking spaces, and that's really what the waiver request falls on, is the proximity to public on-street parking spaces. Combined with the fact that this lot. Has very little capability for establishing additional parking spaces. So yeah, I guess we can leave the parking with that. Um, pedestrian circulation. Um. This, this, this lot is already pretty much developed with, uh, that existing Clots Building there. Uh, there's sidewalk in front of the building that runs along, uh, both Crumb Street and Grand River Road and Roosevelt Row. Um, the applicant noted within that additional information. That, uh, customers would access the building through, for, uh, through the Grand River Road entrance. Um, on the south side of the building. For site lighting, um, there were. Within the revised information that was provided on Friday, um, there were a couple of existing, um, light, lighting, uh. That were noted, uh, two, uh, one existing, uh, wall-mounted lights on the north side of the building. And an existing pole-mounted light, uh, which, which lights the, uh, the shared, um, parking area to the north of the site. Um, the applicant noted that there are two additional proposed lights. Um, both for security purposes in order to meet, uh, the standards that are set, set forth by, uh, the city and the state for, um, security. Uh, they would be at both entrances, both the, the Grand River Road entrance and, uh, to the north, uh, on the north side of the building. Um, as far as landscaping and buffering is concerned. Um, the applicant is also requesting a waiver for landscaping. Uh, being that, with the reasoning being that the site is, is primarily, it's developed. Uh, we're using an, an existing building, uh, with an existing, uh, gravel parking lot. Um. So the planning commission should consider that. And that, that is our primary report here. Um, I guess I can kind of turn it over to the applicant to discuss some of the specific, uh, additional information that was provided on Friday.
Uh, thank you guys for hearing us out tonight, uh, here with me, I've got a little bit of a, uh, sinus issue here, so. Uh, if, if I'm not clear, I'll try to adjust the microphones or do whatever I can to help you guys understand me a little better. Yeah, uh, going back to the, uh. Questions, uh, the section three of the staff report. Getting to, uh, let's see, moving over. Okay, so going to the discussion of placement of display, decoration, signage. Uh, our goal is to maintain kind of the aesthetic appeal that the downtown has, the historic appeal. We have no interest at all in having some sort of fluorescent lights or, you know, uh, marijuana leaves or anything crazy like that. Our goal is going to be to have simply a sign with the company name on it. Uh, it's going to be very. Pretty general, lack of white sign, block letters. Uh, but we also want to do everything we can to stay within, uh, zoning outside of that, but the goal being. We don't want this thing to be heavily attractive, we're not looking to put advertisements out, uh, marketing materials, we don't want anything in the front windows that would entice people to want to walk in. The type of operation that we're gonna have is a place that you're gonna know, uh, what we have going on, uh, by simply having done your homework. Um, anybody who wants to be there is gonna know what it is. It's not gonna be, we're not gonna try any, uh, market people that are walking by to come in. So, that, that would address the, the signage issue. Um. Hours of operation are, they're going to be, uh, it's, it's gonna kind of depend on. How the business is actually doing, uh, we're not gonna want to stay open when, you know, if it doesn't, if it's not feasible to stay open. Uh, with that said, I'm not the, the management that is the operator. Uh, I, I posted some hours that they recommended in there, but again, I think this is very open to doing whatever we can to assimilate within the city and the business district. As opposed to trying to stand out from other people. Uh, hazardous waste and disposal, uh, we're gonna follow up the city length for again the state. Uh, requirements for this industry, uh, which includes any, uh, anything that we would use when, when, uh, to play MSDS sheets. Uh, I think the biggest part of this comes down to the processing side, which I can get a little explanation to you guys as far as the processor that we work with. Uh, we're not a hundred percent sure on, on the processing at this point, it's something we want to, we're trying to be ahead of the game on. Our main plan that I've been working on is the retail side. Uh, but the process that we're working with purchases wholesale, uh. And distillates, the oil, so they don't actually take the, the flour and turn it into the distillate. They purchase wholesale distillate and they turn it into other materials from there, so it turns into basically a, uh, kitchen where they can make. Uh, tinctures and, uh, chocolates and, uh, gummy products, those sorts of a thing. Um, and, uh. I've asked them to provide all the materials, uh, they're trying to get it together in Washington, so there's a little bit of a difference between what our state allows and what the state of Washington allows, so. Uh, once we secure that, I will obviously bring everything over to you guys. And then the next portion would be the, uh. Odors, so the. I, I know this is a, a big issue with the cannabis industry, and, uh, the bulk of all orders for this come from the grow side, mostly because. When the product is in full bloom, the quote-unquote buds are, are just heavily doused with oil, they are incredibly potent. The, the, the product that comes into the stores is going to be dried out from that point, so. At the grow facilities, they cut the plant, they hang it, they dry it, and that only makes an incredible amount of smell, but then also comes packaged. The product that we will be selling will already be packaged, ready to go. Uh, the packaging is tamper-resistant per state law. Um, and if you haven't seen it, it's, it's, a lot of the places have gotten pretty creative with, um, screw tops and glass jars and things that really keep the odor out. Uh, in addition, where we plan to keep things, the, the room will not have, uh, any sort of shared airflow with any other portion of the building. So it'll have a, what we can call a mini-split air conditioner, mini-split HVAC system to offer climate control without having ductwork that pump it throughout all the buildings. So I hope everybody could hear and understand what was going on, and I apologize for, uh, daughter started school, so, uh, probably gonna be sick for the next year.
Mr. Liski.
There. Sorry, I was having some technical issues, I couldn't hear very well earlier, if I, uh, should have raised my hand and I didn't, I apologize. Uh, the reason I wanted to make a few comments, a lot of people, uh, have asked me what I thought about, uh, this, um, application, and. So I thought I'd just speak publicly and let everyone hear what I, what my thoughts are at the same time. Uh, first of all, I want to say that we support competition. I mean, competition is part of what makes our country great, the free market society, so we, we welcome competition. But I do want to comment on previous, uh, hearings, uh, about the, uh, the thought that if we are the only store in town. That we would have a monopoly, and I just, uh, disagree with that, uh, because Sage Market or Leonard Hardware. Uh, they, they don't have a monopoly, uh, it's a short drive to, uh, Home Depot or Bath Township Myers and so forth. We know that the day we open, there are three stores, one in Alaso, one in St. John's and one in East Lansing. That are within a ten or fifteen minute drive. But more importantly, the St. John's and Alaso stores deliver to Langsberg. So, um, for those reasons, we don't think that the monopoly concern is, is justified. Uh, now, with regards to this specific building, this, uh, one oh five East Grand River, I can tell you why, when we looked at that property, why we didn't pursue it. Um, and the primary reason. Is that, I'd say ninety to ninety-five percent of marijuana sales right now are curbside pickup. And. The state regulatory agency requires curbside pickup. Uh, to only occur on private lots, onsite parking. They can't be. Uh. You can't do curbside pickup from a. Public parking spot. And, uh, the reason for that is obvious, you don't want people running out of the store, you don't want clerks running out of the store to a public parking spot. Have the driver roll down the window and they check the ID, and that's what we're all trying to get away from. So, um. That's, that's why we purchased the building we have because of the onsite parking. And why we're fencing all around it for, to give our customers, uh, a sense of, uh, privacy. And if anybody's driven by there lately, you can see we're spending thousands of dollars to upgrade the parking lot to code. And, and so that's, that's one of the huge reasons why we didn't pursue that, um. Current, uh, site that's under, yeah, construction. The other, the other concerns that I think, um, you should be aware of with regards to any, uh, marijuana property. And especially those that might be licensed as a processor, is the. Proximity to, uh, residential or resident occupancy. I don't believe, and you'd have to double-check, but I don't believe that a processing license can be within a hundred feet of a. Residential, um, of a residence. I, and I think that is the National Fire Safety Code Regulation, the National Fire Protection, uh, Agency has. A whole set of marijuana, uh, related regulations. So, I, I know some communities, I think Lansing and maybe, uh, I know Meridian Township, they don't allow any marijuana. Facilities, a store or anything to be adjacent to a residence, so. I'm not sure if the plan is to have apartments upstairs, but I think you'd want to double-check that. Prior. Um. And then I guess the, I, I heard what Mr. Berman said about, uh, their processing plan is, um. Uh, to not do, um, extraction and so forth on the property. But if it's licensed as a processor, they, they can, and if. If, uh, Mr. Berman's client sells it to somebody else, that, you know, what, what happens there? So you might want to. You might want to think about that. The, the other reason, uh, final reason that, uh, we, uh, were concerned about why we didn't do this, uh, pursue this property was the ADA upgrade. Uh, we've been told by our architect and even the county building inspector, um. That, um. This change of use and the fact that it's a marijuana property. Everything needs to be upgraded to ADA, and we're certainly doing that at our building. And I'm not sure if that's in this plan or not. And then, uh, finally, I just want to say that, uh. Mr. Berman and I have met, we've had lunch a few months ago, and I find him to be a fine fellow. This is not, uh, directed, you know, at him or any, anything like that, he's, uh, he's obviously been very successful at this. Marijuana real estate brokerage business, and, uh, I, I respect him for that. I think that's everything I've got to say unless somebody had any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liski. Is there anyone else out there that has comment?
So I have a, I have a number of questions. Um. Based on John, and. Rose Villa being right next door, uh, how does that affect the, well, it's not a residence, it is a hotel. Type structure, I don't know, I mean, whether that makes any difference or not, so that was something that popped into my head when John was talking. Uh, I guess my biggest question, and I'm not sure this is for this group to answer, but kind of as a city leader. Uh, what benefits does Langsberg get out of having? So there's a question about whether Langsberg and the Langsberg area can support two marijuana distribution facilities, right? Uh, but that's more on the challenge of the business owners in my, my opinion, right? But what benefits does Langsberg get out of having two, uh, marijuana, just, I mean, are there any? And I, I don't, I asked that question, I don't know the answer to that, why, why would Langsberg want to have two? Uh, and I'm, again, I'm not saying it's bad, I just don't know if there's benefits to it.
Well, unless it's changed, and somebody else more intelligent than myself probably should answer this. But my understanding was way back is that. There is, I'm gonna use it as example, I don't know if it's set up that way, and, and the two business owners may know, but it's kind of like a lottery system. there is, I'm going to use it as example. I don't know if it's set up that way and, and the two business owners may know, but it's kind of like a lottery system. The more money the state takes in, the people that sell those tickets and stuff get a cut. Well, there's taxes being paid on this and it's like 20%. And the city gets part of a pool for being part of that unless they've changed it. So there is a benefit on that fact besides the licensing fees and so forth, but that may have changed.
So there, there was a change from the original MMFLA, which was the medical side of this. Inside the MMFLA, they had a breakdown of what percent goes to municipalities. And also within that, if there was any change or adaptation to the fee structure, then the MMFLA fee structure thus disappeared. What happened was the MRTMA, which is going to be the adult use, so the recreational law, that brought forth a 10% surcharge, which is up from the 3%. And it also brought a, a fun caveat that you only got to participate in the, for lack of a better term, we call it profit sharing. But there's, there's a, quite the structure that you have to go through before they give you out the money. In order to participate, you had to have retail. So having, the more retail you have, the, the more, the more your footprint, I guess, is in for that, for that profit sharing. So did that answer the question?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm not sure there's a good answer to my, I mean, but it's more the, why do we, why do we need two? And does it benefit us? It's really, really what my question comes down to. So. So another thing, Michael, can you talk about the parking, the 22? How did you get 22 parking spots required for that?
Before Mike goes into that, I can address the other issue. The, the other issue having to be, you know, why on a particular land and use of the city council set up that two licenses would be available for each particular type of license that there is. And that was done in order to have competition as Mr. Liski addressed. The same question has been raised in planning and zoning in the past. Why do we need two restaurants? Why do we need two bars? Why do we need two group daycares and those sorts of things? So I, I would, I'd caution you at that barometer because that's up to the city council.
And I, I think I started my question with, I'm not sure this is the group that needs to answer because that's more of a business and not as much of a planning. So, so, but I just was curious. And I, I agree. I'm good with competition. I think I also said that the competition is more between the biz. I was more, what does a city get out of it? Right? So, all right. Thank you. How did you get 22 parking spots required? And then you cut it down to 11 because there are parking spots available. And I, I mean, Roosevelt Row has a bunch of parking and I don't, I don't think parking for this is going to be a challenge because of Roosevelt Row. So I'm not asking that. I'm just more trying to figure out how you got the numbers and all that. So.
Yeah. And, and that's a, that's a great question, Jeff. And I'm actually struggling to identify the specific ordinance provision, but like any other land use, there are, based on, you know, the, the amount of people that are going to be needing to come in and utilize that piece of property, there's a certain amount of, of required off-street parking spaces for anything. And the, and like I said, struggling to identify the specific provision, which, which gives us our calculation here. But I will, I will look into that and, and, and give you exactly how we came up with that number. I can't speak to the reduction and waiver aspect though. It's, so within section 1303 of the ordinance, it, it, it gives the planning commission some flexibility if there are public parking spaces provided. So those, those public parking spaces can be counted towards the overall off-street that's needed.
There's 40 in Roosevelt. I mean, I would think there'd be plenty of parking right there. Right next door, but pretty darn close. So.
A help a little bit on this? This is Jesse Luder. I'm with Wolverine Engineers and Surveyors. We're the ones who came up with the site plan for the site.
Go ahead.
I don't have the specific ordinance number, but on our plans on, under the site data on C 2.0, the parking requirements are listed as one space for 200 square feet of usable floor space. And that's where we went by to establish the 22 for parking numbers. From our experience, most of these numbers are intended for things that are a little bit different from this type of site plan. An area like this that has no available parking lot or anything else, a lot of times the, the one per 200 is meant for standalone buildings, an area that have, that are able to be developed and add parking to the ordinance. So our understanding is that the one space for 200 square feet is not, it's not intended for this type of location, which is in a downtown area. It's more meant for an area that's on its own.
In my question, Jesse was, was, I mean, I'm in the same situation. So it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't questioning the parking. It was just how did, how did you come up with that number? So. And my last question is one of the things that they're looking to have us not, I forget what the term is, is the 1600 square feet of landscaping? Why, why would there need to be landscaping as part of this? Why, why would we have to give them a variance so they don't have to do that? You see what I'm asking?
So I'd like to comment on that quickly as well. The owner is happy to, to provide landscaping where in any areas that they have the right to do so. And I've talked to Marcus about this and we, unfortunately with this site, because of where the property lines are located, they're unable to provide that, that parking without being a restriction on the access to the adjacent buildings. So if it came down to it and there was a, we felt there was an area where that could be provided, they would be happy to, to allow that.
And to kind of speak to the landscaping requirements a little bit more, yeah, any, anytime you have a, a new proposed use, you want to be able to try and offset the impact of that use to the adjacent property owners. There's a blanket landscaping requirement for every, every use that's, that's being proposed by anything that requires site plan review. So you kind of get that, you know, in, in this particular situation where you have the site that's almost completely developed, you know, it seems a little crazy. But if this was in a different location, let's say in the outskirts of town where it was a total virgin site, you know, you, you would want to see landscape buffering between, you know, that, that adjacent neighbor. And that, and that neighbor would probably want it as well. So it's, it's something to consider, but you know, it, you know, you gotta be practical about it, I guess.
Relatively new member to the planning commission question. So.
No, they're good questions.
The one question that I have, and Mr. Berman probably would be the one because Mr. Liski has spoke on that, is if that be the case about the ADA and curb delivery and so forth, what's your plans on that?
So curb side delivery has been very popular during the COVID time. And, and I, I guess my, my comment to Mr. Liski on that would be cheers, you have the advantage at that spot. The ADA is something that we'll work with the engineers and architects as we go down that road. The building was one that we identified as something we liked. It wasn't actively listed for sale. Something that I liked it, walked in and pre relationship with Mr. Clots to, to try to pursue. And until a point in which we feel comfortable spending more money, basically we have the approval, at least on the land use side, before we actually get to the permit for licensing side. We wanted to get to this spot as soon as we, if we have the blessing to move forward from this spot by both the planning commission and the city council. That's when we will bring in the, the rest of the team to start coming up with the building plans. We have the full intentions of making this building fully accessible, meeting any sort of requirements that we have to meet both with the city and with the state standards. And I'm not a construction guru or a code guru, so I, I don't know what requirements we have to meet and don't have to meet. That's going to be something that we're going to rely on our team for. But rest assured, it is definitely something that, if, if there's something that needs to be done and it's feasible to do, that's, that's going to be our full intention.
Thank you. Does anyone know any more information on the 100 foot from a residency?
I can speak to that as far as the city ordinance. The, our, our, the city's ordinance does not require that 100 foot setback from a residence. As far as the state of Michigan, I, I, I can't speak to that. I, I will say, I, when, when that was brought up, I did have a chance to go on to our GIS mapping system and pull up this property and use a buffer tool to kind of identify any properties that are within that 100 foot radius. We do show that there are two residences along Lang Street, 105 Lang Street and 111 Lang Street. Both appear to be occupied dwellings and those would be within 100 feet of the property line. But it meets our, it meets the city's ordinance, I guess, is, is what I can say.
Okay. I thought it did, but I wanted everybody to hear if that was the case.
I believe reference was made to, I'm sorry.
We lost you.
Oh, I, I believe reference was made that that was a fire code issue, and that'll be looked at as well as ADA and such. I think the particular question that was asked though, is if the applicant intends to put rentals in the second floor, residential rentals. We have no intention of putting rentals in the second floor.
Would it fall though, because of the other rentals that are actually off of Crum Street, would those be too close?
Again, it would be something we'd look at, the architect would look at. They still need to go through the licensing. Not only through the city, but with the state, the state's going to hold the ultimate cards. They will have their individuals look at that. And so, yeah, if that's the case, if there, there is a hundred foot separation, which none of us are, are certified fire code inspectors or, or architects, I would make that determination at the, at the state. So I'd strongly encourage the applicant to take that nugget of information and maybe look at it real quick, real soon.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions or concerns to ask or bring forth?
Is this where we would discuss paving? Or am I?
Discuss the parking lot?
Yeah, I don't want to go out of place.
You're fine. That's what this is for, is to discuss all the issues that you see or others. So.
That's the only thing that I have. I mean, you guys covered most of the, all the questions that I had except for paving. We, that's one thing that we for sure need to go over. Considering since that's part of our ordinance.
Now on the clarification, in case I'm wrong, which I am a lot. The change of ownership, that gravel part in the back, is that not part of the Clot's property or is all three businesses back there share that?
I have no clue.
Is my clerk out there?
Yeah, sign here. Um, there, there is a portion of that that would belong to that property. I do believe it's laid out on their site plan.
Yeah, I think I seen it.
But what they're trying to tell you there is there's a 10 foot easement in there. Is that right? 10 foot, I think?
Yeah, yeah, it's 10 feet.
Easement in there that allows those businesses access to their property.
Right.
So there's a limit to what can be done there, but, um, I mean, I'd like to see the city and the applicant work together to maybe create some kind of public parking spaces there. If this thing, um.
Would the applicant be open to that?
Absolutely.
Because the city owns the property right beside of it. So I think that it would benefit everyone if we did have some space there and then forever be able to keep that lane open to all the businesses there.
I agree. But I also, it's not just on him. Obviously it's numerous businesses and owners that you'd have to go through. So.
Well, the problem is those owners don't own that. That's the problem. They own to their back door pretty much.
They just have an easement to drive on it to get to their business.
Got it.
So I wanted to chime in just one item on that. And there's the irregular shape of the back lot makes it very difficult to pave. They only have access to a certain percentage of that back area. And to pave some of it, but not all of it. Easable.
Yeah.
So it's, and Marcus and I have talked about this as well, but if all owners would like to go in together and with authorize some sort of paving activity, generally what we've seen in the past on similar sites again, is where everyone works towards that and that becomes a condition of site plan approval. Once, once everybody's on board with doing a paving operation, then, then it would occur at that time. But we're trying to do everything we can to, to meet the regulations, given this strange lot.
Right.
I think it's an improvement that everyone would be able to work toward the DDA, the city, and those businesses would all benefit.
I agree. Yeah, totally. So, so moving on.
Well, as far as looking at.
In our previous. We make it part of this process, but that's what Pete and Mike are for.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, in our previous meetings on other things that we had going on, this was a, was an issue. And I guess I got sold on the idea that parking lots in town should be paved because of the gravel coming out of it onto the streets with snow plowing and, and all the other things. And, and it's a, it's an ordinance that, I mean, was passed and is in place in Langsberg. So it makes sense to, to do it. Now, I also understand that there are three or four businesses that are part of that parking lot, that this new business shouldn't take the whole brunt of the cost of that. So.
Right, exactly. If we can get them all together, joint effort, let's do it. But is this the, I mean, is this the moment for that? I don't know.
Let's, it's, it's time for discussion. And then when you're, when you move forward, you put out your conditions. So.
And may I comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Quick. And I agree with you that, that if the planning commission wants to consider a condition such as that the special land use holder shall participate in any paving project coordinated by the city, therefore it's fair to all through there. So if they're going to pave the whole thing, as part of your special land use condition, you must participate. That way, the property owner is reassured that it's not just going to gig them or they're going to be unfairly treated, that it'll have to be something coordinated by the city. So if the city can get everybody involved as part of their special land use, they have to play ball as well.
And we clean up a problem.
Right. So I guess in my ignorance, if the planning commission wants to push this forward, do they need to put that condition to work together like you just spoke? Or is that going to be laid out in between there? Between you guys and as it's presented at council?
I would add it as a, as a condition of the special land use as recommended to the city council, if you believe in the, as Mr. Geisler discussed, the, the paving is important.
Well, myself, I agree with Mr. Geisler because the fact is, is we just got through this last month and it took us three months for paving and it is our ordinance.
Right. Yeah.
So is there anything else? So is there anything else anyone has to speak or say or put in or? All right, well. If nothing else needs to be done or discussed at this issue. Uh, we have to come out of closed session before we make any motions anyway, so.
It's not a closed session.
Oh, that's public hearing, I mean, sorry. Hey, don't confuse me anymore than I am today.
Do you need a motion to stop the public hearing on this?
Yes.
Yeah, I just made a motion to.
Okay, Appicelli.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote to come out of public hearing.
Appicelli?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Cole Pepper?
Yes.
Freidenberg?
Yes.
All right, now, what do we need? Just to make a recommendation of with the conditions?
Yeah, it was, um.
Or it's wrote that way or what do we got?
Yep, so it's basically in your, um, staff report.
Yep.
At the end, they always give us some options, so there's a recommendation, if you'd like to approve it, there's a recommendation for tabling. Um, because it does appear to meet all of our standards. We, if we were to approve it, you need to talk about, um, what conditions you want to set or you want to recommend to the city council. If you table it, you need to, um, say why you're tabling it.
Okay. So.
Can we, can we recommend to approve with the condition of some sort of collective effort to pave everything behind that row of buildings?
Yes.
Or, or, what about doing a study or a plan, like Paula, you were talking about the city owns some of that and.
The city does own, um, we own behind there all the way over to the car wash.
That's what I thought. So do, make a plan to make that whole area improve the city. I mean, so not only paving the parking lot, but, but making that area all useful, whether it's traditional parking, whether it's a park, whether it's, you know, grass, whatever. Does that make sense?
I would think that we would definitely want to delineate, um, that easement so that everyone knows back there that they have access to their building. Cause I know that, um, in the past, we've had some issues there where people don't really know and then other owners block it off and so I think it, as a city improvement, that would be huge for any future business owner, let alone the current ones.
You don't want people out there with a spray can putting private property?
Right.
I couldn't resist.
Is there any other condition that this planning commission wants to set forth?
Um, as far as the hundred foot within a residency, um, do we need to put a condition in for that somehow?
Isn't that already part of our ordinance?
Yes.
Which is not in our ordinance.
But we have.
Apologize.
So, so that, I'm just stepping in and I, maybe I misunderstood Pete.
Yeah, I don't know either.
I mean, well, so if he, it fits the ordinance within Langsburg, but it might not meet the state ordinance. That's not up to us.
Not our.
Decide. That's when the state gives a license, they need to come in and say, no, you can't do it because of that.
You're exactly right, Jeff. You're exactly right. We, you know, if they meet our ordinance standards, but they don't meet the state's requirements, the state won't issue the license, plain and simple.
Okay.
So with that being said though, wouldn't that be that where we want to table this till we verified as to it met those qualifications?
No, they have to meet ours before it can go to the state and the state will deny it.
Okay, okay. That's where I was getting confused, sorry.
Yeah, if we don't move forward for the city for them, they can't move forward.
Gotcha, okay.
And just because we move forward, doesn't mean the state is necessarily.
Doesn't mean they can still go forward with everything else.
Exactly.
Gotcha, okay.
They still got to meet all the state codes and all the city codes as well, so if you approve it here or move the conditions up to go to city council and whatever city council does, then the state will look at it and say, okay, you can, you can, you can, or you can't, yes, you can, or whatever, and that's you know, we won't have our hand in that, that will pass ours on to them as a, if it's a blessing, then that's fine, so. So, is anybody want to make a motion or recommendation to send it to council with those conditions and stipulations or whatever you want to call them?
I make a motion to send it to council with the paving conditions, the collective effort.
I second that. Absolutely.
We have a motion and a second to move the recommendation forward to city council with one of the main contingencies or condition is the parking lot to work together as the city and other businesses or whatever in a collective hand, basically, and then the state will take care of any other issues that don't meet or do meet our requirements as a city.
So, um, if Pete or Mike could help me clarify, like maybe some language on that, what?
Thanks for being here, guys.
That's what we're here for. So what I got, uh, written down here and is that the applicant shall participate in a coordinated paving slash parking effort with the city as a condition of the special use permit and site plan review approval. That sound about right, Pete?
The only thing I would add is that it was, if they participate in the city coordinated.
City coordinated.
I think you had city on there, but just city coordinated, so nobody feels left out.
Yep.
And do we, do we have to have something in there about? Because they talked about waiving the parking, waiving the landscaping, or is that just, since we didn't put it as a stipulation, we're going to approve that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was part of their overall proposal, so if you're approving based on what they've, they've provided, it's assumed that you're going with that waiver.
Okay, so we have the motion and second and the discussion, anything else? Roll call. Please.
Appicelli?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Cole Pepper?
Yes.
Freidenberg?
Yes.
Motion carried to move it up to city council or present it to them with the conditions.
The next thing on the agenda, Mike, is a public hearing to reaffirm the master plan or to open it back up. Whichever you guys see fit.
Absolutely, so, um, I can, I can discuss that. And so essentially, what we have is that, uh, I, I hope everybody's familiar with the RRC certification process that we went through for a few years there with ME DC. They've identified the fact that we are, we've come up to our five year renewal period or review period for our current city master plan. It was, it was structured through 2019. So it is a mandatory thing that every, every unit that does planning and zoning have a master plan review every five years. To the extent of which that's completely up to that jurisdiction and what they feel they need to do. You can go through and do complete re-survey of the, of the community, of the goals and objectives that we want to see in the future with development and do a full-on, full-blown re, redone master plan at that time. Or we can look at it and say, hey, you know, these, these are goals and objectives and the way development has occurred over that period of time is still consistent with our current plan. We look at, so yeah, I mean, it, the, the master plan, it's broken down into, um, you know, what are our goals? What are those specific actions that we need to take to meet those goals? And where would we like to see future uses go? And we've kind of hit, we've, we've hit that five-year point. Really, the question we need to be asking ourselves right now are, has development over this past five year, past five years been in, has it been in a manner that's been consistent with our current plan? I would, I would argue that yes, it has been. We've seen development primarily go in areas that we did expect them to. Our most recent rezoning was slightly outside of that master plan with the future land use map specifically, but it was across, it was across the street. You can't, you can't plan for every specific, you know, not every use is going to fall exactly into place like that, but yeah, I, I guess, uh, yeah, I guess those are the kind of the questions we need to ask. Are our goals still consistent right now with what they were established in 2015? You know, we've done, every year we do an annual review of those goals and objectives. Earlier this year, we found that primarily we are, we're, we're still in line with those. So I guess, you know, if, at this point, if, if I saw that, hey, you know, we're approving rezonings that are completely, you know, don't meet our plan, I'd say, okay, well, yeah, we probably need to look at this a bit deeper. Maybe, maybe revise some specific sections of it. By and large, that, that just hasn't been the case. So what, what can be done at this point is, is there can be a couple of different actions. We can do a, a fill-in-the-blank renewal of our current master plan. Call it the 2020 to 2025 master plan and reassess. We will continue to reassess every year based on the things that have happened, the type of development that has taken place. If we find that the master plan is not meeting that those, those types of the development that is coming in, we can adjust it at that point. We can do two, we can, we can update specific items that we find are, have changed. We can update data, we can do small, we can, we can add in portions about the capital improvements plan, changes with the downtown development authority. We can add things in without doing a full-blown complete re-update. And then finally, the third option would be to do total new plan, which would involve surveying the community, coming up with new goals and objectives based on those surveys. And that would be a much more blown-out process. It's, it's, as the planning commission, it's, it's your decision on how we proceed. So yeah, I guess, done a lot of talking right there. I'll turn it over to you to kind of ask to fill in the blanks as needed.
If I remember correctly, we went through in, uh, last year during, I don't know, late spring, summer, whenever it was, before we had the RRC certification, we went through and kind of made some adjustments to the, the whole master plan. I think that we went through three, three meetings of discussing that and adjusting it. From what I can tell, I mean, I think that we've relatively recently gone through that and everything seems to be meeting the standards of, of what we're striving towards.
Great. So yeah, I, uh, yeah, you know, if we were getting development requests that, that did not meet what our current plan had set, had put in writing, you know, we'd be recommending, you know, hey, we need to adjust some things. I don't think that we're quite there yet. As we get new types of, of businesses coming in and our, our goals change, absolutely. You know, that's the time to, to do the full-on, you know, larger adjustment of the plan. Just doesn't seem like we're quite at that point now.
So, so you and Pete being the experts on this, five years ago, and I'll just use this as an example, I don't know how much it's affected. Would we have been thinking we were doing special use for marijuana processing and, and sales places, right? Do you see anything like that? That five years from now, four years from now, might be different than what we're thinking of today, that we might be, we might be thinking of the future. I mean, I, I work in computers and we're always looking three, four, or five years out, what's going to be different? Do you guys see anything that's going to be different?
I, I would say if, if anything, maybe additional discussion about renewables, renewable energy, you know, there's definitely, we're seeing a lot more of that in Chiwasi County as well. But I think something like that is, is, it's more appropriate to do a zoning ordinance amendment to actually provide for those types of uses because we don't really have anything in the ordinance for our, our actual zoning ordinance for solar. We do have something for wind, not going to be particularly applicable here. But as far as the master plan goes, as far as our guide for, for future type of business development, I would say it stayed relative, this is relatively on point for, for what we expected. Even with those marijuana uses, you know, we don't account for those specifically. But we, we did account for the fact that we wanted to see retail uses go within our downtown district. That's exactly what we're seeing with marijuana. It's going into the places where we've identified commercial land uses should go. You know, if there was a, an industrial park at the edge, at the edge of town, you know, that, that popped up over that course of time, that, that's different, but not quite seeing those big, broad changes. Master plan, it's not as much accounting for those specific uses of land, but the broad strokes.
So you don't see, I guess I'm gonna assume from what you're saying, you don't see the need for us to go through and at least just fill in the blanks on anything that's changed to make a change as far as a current change or I mean, do you see it beneficial to at least do that much or or you just say stay standard quote because we've been filling it just like that? I know it's hard for you to answer because you've got to do it and you actually work for it, but the bottom line of it is, is I, I'm looking at it saying, if we go and leave it like it is now and there was something to change, even if it was little, that means that in two or three years, we're going to have to go back and do double the amount if we have to change something. So if we just review it and fill in any blanks, I'm thinking that would make us right up to the snuff of everything and we could include the businesses that are coming if we know they're coming. And that even covers us for another couple of years for sure, so that we don't have to be faced with that, in my opinion, so. You guys are the ones that do this as a living. I just, I just play at it.
So, I think that, um, like Anthony said, is that like, I mean, over the last year or two, we have actually been reviewing the master plan in conjunction with the RRC program, so we've been reaffirming all these things as we go along, but if you've read it and there's something you'd like to see changed, then I guess that's what you need to let us know.
Uh, we can leave it to that, if that's two, is, you know, everybody can review it and see if they have anything that they see.
So I will say, uh, to kind of address what you were talking about there, Mike, is that, you know, I think some of those changes that we've mentioned are mostly due to the fact that we've accomplished a lot of goals in the last five years. We, we've, we've hit on a lot of the things that we've identified as being important to this community and actual, um, actual things that are measurable, rather than, you know, we want to see, we want to promote growth.
Anticipation.
However, when you talk about getting into the nitty-gritty of, of updating those specific actions, we really should be talking about a larger update at that point. I think we should be talking about getting more community involvement. We, we shouldn't base those, our new goals off of 2010 survey data. It, it should be off of our, off of 2020 current, current people, current people talking about what matters to them for the city. And that's where I would more suggest, you know, if we are going to do an update like that, it probably should be a major plan update that, that. um, a major plan update that that would incorporate new data.
Well, I'm fine with the way it stands because we've updated it and spent plenty of time on it. I was just throwing it out there as different options of what we might do or need to do. If if we're good with what we got because we have reviewed it, I'm in favor for leaving it right there for now myself, but um.
And nothing says we can't open it back up in a year or a year and a half. I mean, we don't have to wait the five years.
That's what my question was going to be. If we have to wait the five years, let's go for the gusto and do it. But if if we can come back in a year, then why not just stay put? If according to Michael and Tony, they seem seems to be going pretty good. I don't, I can't say that I know anything too much about it. I don't have lots of.
That one of the things that we need is we need each of you guys to read that master plan.
Yeah.
To highlight it, to make sticky notes, to ask us questions. Because if you guys don't read it and, you know, know what's in there, we can't, I mean, I don't really see any point right now and just going, okay, we're going to go ahead and revamp this. Why don't we understand what we have?
Right.
Start talking about what things we would change in a year or so if we want to update it.
Agreed.
Agreed.
And then on top of that, the same thing with the zoning ordinance. I mean, you know, the, all of the, all of the things that we're putting in these staff reports and that we're asking these applicants, they're all things that are in our ordinance. And if we're bringing it to you with a question, it's either A, we need to change our ordinance or it actually had given you some leeway already in our ordinance. Otherwise, they're telling the applicant, you have to do this, you have to do that because that's what our ordinance says. So unless they're asking for a variance from it, that's what's in there. So I think that we all just need to kind of take the time and become more educated on what is in those. So that it makes it a lot, makes a lot more sense when you go to look at something. I mean, some things we have to look up, like the number of parking spaces and some of those things, you know. But there's just things that at least you would need to know where it was and how you could find it. And that all is on our website and it's searchable.
Yep.
And Dana, just to kind of answer your question directly there, you, we can update, we can do a major update at any time. It's it's felt as necessary. Um, the Planning Enabling Act, that was, that's the, that's what we operate under for for planning and zoning. It tells us every five years we have to look at it. And that's why our, that's why ME DC is calling it out as, hey, you guys need to do this. Do you want to keep your certification? Absolutely, we can do it. Um, to what extent, how deeply we dive, that's, that's where it's, you know, that determination's on you.
So you need a motion to reaffirm the current planning commission master plan. Is that what you're asking for?
Well, I guess, first of all, did we ever make a motion to open this public hearing that we've been kind of having?
Uh. I mean, look here.
No.
We were going to do a public hearing uh to reaffirm it. So, um.
Yeah, we got in discussion.
So I think that we need a motion.
So I'm going to open the public hearing for
Five year plan.
The five year master plan.
Yeah.
Dana seconded that.
My motion, we close the discussion on the five year.
Well, we gotta, we gotta vote first.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, Jeff, I was gonna second that real quick, too. So.
Ready.
Soon as we vote, you can do that.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
So I guess you just might want to see if there's any public comment out there.
Yeah. So we will open it up for any public comment out here. Okay. Uh.
Jeff, no.
Okay, my motion that we close public comment.
Public hearing.
Who seconded that?
Freidenberg. Appicelli, Freidenberg both did.
I heard a lot of it, so, okay. Appicelli.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
Now we are looking for a motion to recommend, uh, you know, that the city council reaffirm.
Motion that city council reaffirm the master.
Geisler seconds.
All right. Discussion. Roll call.
Appicelli.
Yes.
Judd.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Cole Pepper.
Yes.
Freidenberg.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Number seven is other. Is there anything else to come forth? Oh, I don't hear anything other. Paula, can you just give us one quick update? When is the amphitheater supposed to be delivered this week or was it a little late?
The amphitheater, the um actual band show has been delivered.
Oh, great.
It is in storage um until they get this retaining wall finished up. That rain last week kind of put us back a little bit, but they've been working all week on the retaining wall and they were back at it today. So um, I saw the cement truck over there, so I'm thinking we're getting ready pretty close probably to bring the band show out. So.
Sounds like I'd seen the steps and the wall and everything yesterday or day before and I got, wow, that's looking good. So I wondered if it was in. So uh, if you don't have anything, Paula, and no one else does, then I'm looking for that magic word.
Motion to adjourn.
Let's do it.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for standing up, the chairman.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I wish I'd have been just a little bit more prepared, but that's okay.
You were, you were good, you were good.
I would be in lazy tonight. I have to be admitted that. So.
All right, good night.